Continuing the conversation, not just for next week, but for this coming year and for years to come. And for that, I am deeply thankful to our city workers and their representatives. So with that, it is now time for the vote. Was there a second on my motion? We have a second. If you don't mind, let's take an oral vote on this, if you'll indulge me. Madam Clerk, if you'll please...
Mr. Alarcon. Ms. Hahn.
What were we going to say, aye?
We're doing all of it.
Mr. Weisar.
Aye.
Mr. Corretts.
Aye.
Mr. Parks.
Yes.
Ms. Perry.
Aye.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Mr. Zine.
I will join the crowd, yes.
And Council President Garcetti.
Yes.
And joining us now by phone is the Chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee, Bernard Parks. Councilman, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thank you, Jack. I appreciate the offer.
I can report to you that Friday during the open meeting as well as during the vote, lots and lots of city employees were watching on Channel 35 and wondering, could I still be laid off? Could I still be furloughed? What happens if I'm already on furlough? What about this pension contribution? What's the deal, Councilman?
Basically, what was addressed today in a much better plan than was offered several weeks ago, is a dual effort to help balance the budget, at the same time give flexibility in managing our employees. And the Coalition management has come forward with a great deal of effort to look within their contract and begin to look at ways that they could be of great assistance to the city. This, if ratified and then approved by the council, this will give them some assurance through June 30th, that there will not be layoffs or furloughs of their employees. The furloughs that have already been in place on EAA employees, those will continue as we've not negotiated with them. For police and fire, which is about 70 percent of our budget, it is our hope that their union personnel will sit down with the CLACAO and come to grips with the shared sacrifice that the mayor has imposed on their budget, and do a similar work as the Coalition. And that should be coming up momentarily. But at least a portion of the city's budget has been resolved, and it will be our efforts to continue, starting Monday at 1:00 in the Budget Committee, to begin to look at the solutions for the rest of the shortfall.
As you know, Councilman, there are EAA employees scattered throughout various city departments. Would there be an effort to reexamine the situation with furloughs there?
Yes, I think they have to come to the table and sit down and see what are the best ways and the best tools that make it cost neutral to the city, that flexibility's there for management, and that you end up with a situation to where there's no ongoing legal issues. And so, those are three primary tasks. And what we found with working with the Coalition, when they acknowledged that they understood and agreed with the numbers that we had presented, and they realized the urgency of this situation, they made progress in the last week that was far greater than had been made in the last several months.
Councilman Parks, you know better than anybody else in the city because of the committee that you chair, that the city was hemorrhaging about a million dollars a day beyond its resources. How have you been able to close that gap to reach this agreement?
Well, part of that gap will be closed by how the Coalition has offered meaningful hard dollars to assist the city. It will cause us to increase our reserve fund from where it currently sits at about 150 million. It will add, at least it gets us to about 170, 180. It will help us in the fact that 2,400 people retire. It will remove them off of our payroll in an orderly fashion, and then it will allow our payroll to be reduced significantly. The pension benefits will accrue for the next fiscal, not next fiscal, you're the one after that, because our pension obligation is already set for the fiscal year 10, 11. So it's going to give us a lot of benefits in the fact that if the number of people leave that's expected or projected, the city's revenues will be basically benefited, because we will not be paying these salaries, we will not be paying their medical plans, we will not be dealing with workers' comp issues for 20-some-hundred employees. And then also, as this deal is ratified and then later voted on, there's certain protections for the city of LA, and one of them is a pension protection, in that those that would be getting the early retirement, they're going to actually contribute to the pension fund to help pay for it. So these are the kinds of things that were done, they were done cooperatively, and the general sense is that because they were done cooperatively, then there is a joint effort to see them come to a conclusion. And again, we hope it's a template for those other unions that have not come to the table or without contract, and see how they might begin to look internally to assist the city as opposed to going through the laborious process of an impasse, and then later an issue of unilaterally implementing, things that are torture and take a lot of time and won't nearly get you the results as quickly as we'd like.
If I understand what you've just said, and I'm sure for a lot of people it's tough to follow all that, you've said that the early retirement incentive program has in fact been put back on the table and will presumably be put into effect when ratified, in exchange for getting some benefits of the city pension plan by increased contributions from the members of the Coalition unions?
Yeah, but not only the increased contribution for the pension, but also some hard dollars that either deferred costs that were in their contract or gave up costs that benefit the city. So those are the kind of thing, and on this plan, you are benefiting on one-year recovery of revenue, and you're also benefiting on long-term, because you're removing what is expected to be 2,500 people off of the payroll.
You've just brought up the macro picture here, Mr. Councilman, which is that you have been saying for several years that we have a systemic budget problem in the city of Los Angeles. Does this address in a very meaningful way the systemic problem going years forward into the future?
Yeah, the primary issue that affects the systemic part are the retirement. The 20-some-hundred people that are expected to retire, and the discipline that the city's going to have to reflect is not to replace them. So to move that number of people off the payroll in an orderly and a precise manner is a great benefit, and the return on that effort is going to be significant in the amount of dollars the city will not have to pay for those employees. And then the expected benefit of the reduction in cost of medical care, because you have a smaller workforce, and then the reduction in cost in workers' comp, again because of a smaller workforce.
The seemingly rosy picture that you're painting at this point, is this still dependent upon an economic recovery over the next 18, 24 months that would once again restore the tax base to the city of Los Angeles?
Well, see, it's not rosy at all. It's a matter of just practically rolling our sleeves up and making something happen for short-term and long-term benefits. The issue that could occur, that if you get the worst scenario that you can possibly think of, is that if the economic downturn continues, or not as many people retire as expected, those two things could cause this whole plan to basically stop and cause some renegotiations, and to meet and confer in a 20-day period to determine what is Plan Two, because if either one of those things or both of them occurs, then the results that we were looking for, the cost-neutral area, the issues that are on the table as being the most positive, will dissipate significantly.
And finally, you have just pointed out a couple of times that the word tentative is still in front of this agreement.
That's right, because you can't, as our rules reflect, you can't approve something in a permanent manner unless it's ratified by the members of a union, unless it's then brought back and finally voted on by the city council.
Thank you so much for the explanation of all that. That was actually pretty clear and understandable.
Well, I hope so. We've been at this for a while, and I and others can explain it. It's a very difficult situation. A lot of lives are impacted, a lot of people that have invested a lot of time in the city. So that's why I think it was well worth the time we spent to revamp the deal that was on the table, in which we could not get consensus on, and came up with a much better deal.
Very good. Thank you for joining us, the Chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee, Bernard Parks. Again, the tentative agreement to avoid massive layoffs and furloughs while stopping the million-dollar daily hemorrhaging was approved unanimously. The agreement must be ratified now by the Coalition of Unions' membership and come back before your Los Angeles City Council within the next few weeks. The Los Angeles City Council meetings return to their regular meeting schedule on Tuesday, September 22nd, beginning at 10:00 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending September 18th, 2009. On behalf of senior producer Ted Lynn and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
In the aftermath of a disaster, you may not be able to rely on your knowledge of your home. You might also not be able to rely on your guide dog. The dog may be injured, frightened, confused, panicky, and/or disoriented. Be prepared to calm your dog and to keep it confined and securely niched and/or harnessed. If you use a king, remember to keep it readily available to assist you around hazards and obstacles. Keep a spare by your bed and at all exit doors, as well as a spare leash for the dog. Ensure that your guide dog is microchipped and that their license and identification tag have current contact information. Guide dogs can accompany you to an emergency shelter. Just as you need to prepare an emergency kit for yourself, you need to have one for your dog. Ensure you have enough water, food, any medications they may require, and a first-aid kit. A blanket, a rug, and favorite toy may help calm them as well. Keep your veterinarian's name and number in the kit. Vaccination records may be required at the shelter. Only you know what can prepare and assist you and your family during a disaster. Are you prepared? For additional information, please contact the Department on Disability or the Emergency Management Department by calling the numbers on the screen or by dialing 311.
L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
September 23rd, 2009. We're here in the John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. We are here in council chambers and want to welcome members of the public that are with us, as well as those viewers on Channel 35. Our meetings are made available to the public on Channel 35, live and also rebroadcast in the evenings. They're also made available online through the city's webpage at la-city.org, where there's a wealth of information and links to our city departments and city services to improve the quality of your life. There's also links to our city council agendas and committee meetings. We're also available through your telephone if you're not close to either the Internet or a television. That number is 213-621-CITY. It's a service called Council Phone. It's available not only for our full council meetings, but also for our committee meetings as well, and that's live phone coverage of those meetings, audio coverage through your telephone, 213-621-CITY. Our agendas are available 72 hours in advance or 24 hours in advance for our special meeting items. Those are here in council chambers, in our city clerk's office, or online, again at la-city.org. And there's also, on the agendas, items that have had public hearings and those that have not. Those that have already had public hearings requires a council member to reopen the public hearing in order for those to be heard. For items that have not yet had a public hearing, a card from the public will automatically trigger that, but feel free to put in cards on any of those items. There are cards in the back. Or if you live closer to San Pedro or Van Nuys, we also have remote facilities. So there's a real wealth of ways to watch city council, to be heard by city council. We can watch from those remote locations here in council chambers and on Channel 35. So we commend those to you. We have, right now, about seven members that are here. I want to thank those council members who are here, excuse me, eight members on time. Council members Alarcon, Weisar, Corretts, Labonge, Perry, Smith, and Zine. We are waiting two more council members to constitute a quorum, and it is now 10:10. Council rules dictate that council members should be in their seats at the beginning of the meeting, so the following council members are late. If they'll please join us right away, so we can begin the meeting. Council members Cardenas, Hahn, Parks, Reyes, Rosendahl, and Wesson. Soon as there's two more members, we will begin. If we do fail to reach a quorum at 10:15, we'll have to cancel the meeting because of those late council members. So thank you for your patience, council members, while we await a quorum. We're waiting one more council member. Council members Hahn, Parks, Reyes, Rosendahl, and Wesson. If you'll please join us. Council members Hahn, Parks, Reyes, Rosendahl, and Wesson. We have a quorum. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alarcon, Cardenas, Hahn, Weisar, Corretts, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present. End of quorum. Mr. President.
Okay, council members, if we can draw your attention to the agenda, we'll go through the First Order of Business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Reyes moves, and Mr. Smith seconds, without objection. Those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right, Mr. Weisar moves, and Mr. Alarcon seconds, without objection. Those two will be approved. We can run through the agenda, please.
And, Mr. President, before we get into the regular agenda, there is a request to continue item number 23 to October 7th.
Any objection, colleagues, to continuing 23 until the 7th of October? Seeing none, we'll continue that. Next items?
First items on the agenda are items noted for public hearings, items 1, 2, and 3, and those are street vacations in Council Districts 14, 5, and 8, and the recommendation for council action is to instruct the city engineer to proceed.
Okay, we have no cards, so we'll open and close those public hearings. Any members wishing to call those special? Seeing none, let's go ahead and take up the balance on 1 through 3 and tabulate the vote. Prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
We don't have the boards working up there, so I'll announce that was 10 ayes. That was unanimous vote. And if we have any dissenting votes, I'll be sure to let the public know, though it will be in the record as well. Next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 4 through 18. Items 4 and 5 are commissioners. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold the commissioners on the desk, if we can also make sure Ms. Hahn is on the roll, please. And that leaves us 6 through 18. 6 through 18. I'd like to move a verbal amendment on item number 12, that the city attorney include in the final ordinance, this is the hillside ordinance, the following. Alessandro Elementary School, and the specifics of that are in a written amendment here, the South Side Riverside Drive, Glen Eden, between Riverside and Riverside Terrace, and Riverside Terrace between North Dead End and Riverside Drive. And I'll hand that to the clerk. So if that's accepted as friendly amendment, 12 will be amended as such. Specials, colleagues, 6 through 18. Items 6 through 18. Any specials?
12. 12. 12. 12. 15.
15, okay. We'll hold 12. CD 15, I think, has a verbal amendment as well to add. We'll hold that for Ms. Hahn. If there's no other specials, colleagues, last call, 6 through 18. Anybody 6 through 18? If not?
12.
We have 12. Yep. 6 through 18. If not, let's take up the balance. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, next items, please.
Next items are items for which pub...
Okay, if there's no objection, we'll send 7 forthwith.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items 19 through 24. 10 votes are required for consideration. There's a commissioner on item number 19. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Okay. And we have cards on 19 as well, 21 and 22. So we'll call those special. We'll open and close the other public hearings. Anybody wishing to call special 20 or 24? Seeing none, let's go ahead and prepare the roll. Seeing none, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are the closed sessions, items 25 through 28. Do you wish to hold those on the desk? And there are cards, I believe, on 25 and 26.
Yes, let's hold those on the desk. We'll call those special for cards from the public as well, close the other public hearings, and continue those, or hold them on the desk, excuse me.
And then on the continuation agenda, item number 30 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration on that one, and there are cards.
Okay, is there any objection to consideration of that? Seeing none, we'll call that special for cards from the public on item number 30. If we can then go back, that'll take us to our general public comment. Our first speaker is Michael Hunt. After that is Dr. Clyde Williams. As you come forward, sir, I would again reiterate, you have the right to wear that outfit. It's offensive to me, it's offensive to others. I would ask if you could, to make sure that you don't block people's view, remove your hood while you're at the podium there.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and thank you for giving me the opportunity. I'm here in protest. We were at the mediations yesterday, and the mediations broke down. They asked me for a reduction in payment.
I'm sorry, sir, we have your item later on, that is not a general public comment right now. That's item number 25, sir.
No, 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 I'm talking about the mediation--
Excuse me, sir. Item 25, are you talking about the case that's before us? With your legal case, that is on the agenda. You have a card in, and we will call you for that. If you have other items to discuss today, you can discuss those during general public comment.
I'll just talk about the Venice Beach. I'll talk about our new lawsuit that's actually prevailing in the courts. We just filed a new lawsuit for 11 people today on Venice Beach in the same conditions that we won in 2004 with the summary judgment and decorum. You guys truly don't understand our First Amendment issues. You guys need to pay attention to what we're saying and get us out of here. I am not doing nothing that is not legal and really have my First Amendment issue to stand on. Please listen to what I'm saying. If you guys would have been good listeners, I wouldn't have been here today. I would never be here if you guys would have been good listeners. Just like I told the 11th District, I said, "Please, whatever you do, make it a point that you make sure that you listen to the community." That's all I ask, is that you listen to the community, that it prevails, and that we have group meetings, and that we have meetings in closed session, that we try and handle and mitigate this out. My name is Michael Hunt. I am not going nowhere. I'm ready to listen, and I'm able to listen, and I'm able to sit down and mitigate and talk about what's right. Thank you, Michael Hunt.
Our next speaker is Dr. Clyde Williams. After that is Arnold Sacks.
Sorry, Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, Northeast LA. DWP had their presentation this morning. Shame on them. Water leaks, yeah, but water leaks have been going on for maybe 50 to 100 years. Where has DWP been? In the 1970s, EPA had a very strong leak detection program to reduce the amount of excess money that they were having to spend for maintaining water and sewage facilities. The entire concept of utility economics usually goes back to capital replacement programs, where you do 2% per year for 50 years, and you got it all replaced. Seeing a riveted steel 60-inch pipe burst is not unexpected. It's riveted steel. Why wasn't it replaced a long time ago? This is incomprehensible. And no, water conservation does not cause this. There's more variation in pressure between day and night, 2:00 a.m., 2:00 p.m. So don't blame water conservation for DWP's deferred maintenance, or repair maintenance approach to utilities that supply us with water and power. Thank you.
Thank you. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker. After that will be Miriam Fogler, out in Van Nuys.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, healthcare advocates at the City Council. What a wonderful group. Highlights from news articles, one in six without healthcare coverage. How many people on the living wage ordinance covered by the City of LA, and, according to yesterday's agenda item, the living wage policy of the CRA? How many of those people have healthcare coverage? Councilman Alarcon, Councilwoman Han--
If you could please address that councilman as a whole.
Well, these are people that supported it. Poor or lack healthcare. How many people on the living wage ordinance have healthcare coverage? All you supporters have healthcare coverage. Healthcare is justice. Healthcare is a universal human need, if you can afford it. Workers settle for what they can. This gentleman says, "I'm only making half as much money a year," a cab driver. What he doesn't have is health insurance. And he's not covered by the living wage ordinance. What a wonderful plan. What a wonderful council. Moving forward, leading the charge from behind. How come you manage to always steer the buses off the cliff, but just before you get there, you get off? Why don't you take a tumble with the public? 46.3 million Americans uninsured. How many of the people covered by the Los Angeles Living Wage Ordinance are covered by insurance? How many? How many, councilmen? What a wonderful policy. Get $1.25, lose your health insurance. And listen, if you work for ESI, you got a pay raise, but you don't have any health insurance anymore, because after, what, 12 years of having a contract with the city, they finally remembered that you're covered by the living wage ordinance. So make sure you spend that $1.25. And how did the council manage to get there? It's how we double--
Our Miriam Fogler is our next speaker, in Van Nuys, and after that is Bruce Darian. Good morning.
You people have committed major chutzpah against the city, the public, and everybody. Our vital services are at stake, folks. They want on this new contract that they have ratified, that the units must not pass. The members must vote no. Unilaterally, we must vote it down, because it says that we're going to take all your money that you're referring, and you're going to put it in the general fund, folks, to spend it the way you like. There's no controls over City Council. Nobody can tell them what to do, because there's nobody above them, except God. And they don't listen to God. Look at where we're at. Look at how they're treating the people in living wage ordinance. They treat them like they're the bottom. And I agree with Arnold Sacks 1,000%, because exactly they're doing the same thing to the city coalition. This is a bad deal. You threw in the monkey wrench into something that was okay on the pension side, and the deferred things were okay, but you were still putting people on furlough. 59 hours a month, a year, folks, 59 hours, that's, you know, that's still furloughs. And next year, they don't even guarantee there's no furloughs and layoffs. This is a crummy deal. Vote no. Don't pass this thing. We'd rather go on furloughs and layoffs and go to court, because I'm going to stop you people from doing this. I'm going to sue you people too. Give me the number, Michael Hunt. I want to sue them for this.
Could you lower your voice a little bit, so we can hear you a little bit better, and so our equipment doesn't distort out there? If you could just lower your voice a little bit.
This is injustice. Going to the coalition unions. They sat down with you, and they shouldn't be sitting every year anymore. I want this thing closed. You have the right to keep coming back and asking for more money. You people are the ones that have squandered all the money. There's plenty of money out there, folks. And I talked to Ron Kay, and he knows what's going on. The social welfare programs--
Thank you very much, Ms. Fogler. Our next speaker is Bruce Darian, also in Van Nuys. After that, we'll come back, and Oscar Johnson will follow. Good morning.
Well, as the people could hear, there's some passionate pleas here for some accountability. You know, for years, I've been coming now, actually, to uncover the multi-level government corruption, state contracting fraud involving the state of California, the federal government, the county, and the cities. Your city attorney has regularly said, "Los Angeles has nothing to do with the Malibu Pier debacle." Malibu Pier is the tip of the iceberg of multi-level government corruption. It's been a cover-up by the LA Times and the Daily News. It's been a cover-up by Los Angeles. It's been a cover-up by the county of Los Angeles, and it's been a cover-up by the state of California and the federal government. All jurisdictions involved, all government leaders, all people that were elected in the state legislature, like Viragosa, Alarcon, Cardenas, and Wesson. When you had your DA, which was Garcetti, that was responsible for a false prosecution. You have campaign donors like Federico, Superior Gunnite donating to Cardenas, who Federico falsified everything on the Malibu Pier. And he's a Lakeview Terrace contractor. You have Weintraub, developer, who's ruined coastal wetland there in Malibu, which is important to all of us as Americans. He's contributed to Cardenas, Gruel, or, excuse me, to Gruel, Weiss, Zine, and Han. And he's controlling the Sportsman's Lodge. What's happening with that? The multi-level corruption here in contracts, and now all the budgets are bust, all the money is gone, and it's been stolen. That's where the money is gone. It's been stolen. And you people are responsible for it, because you were interacting with that money being stolen from the people. And you're a fraud, and each and every one of you, there's cause to have you recalled, each one of you. And basically, what I'm calling on the public is to, let's start a revolution here of getting these public officials out of office, and to show real cause, real cause why you should be eliminated.
Oscar Johnson is our next speaker. After that is John Walsh, here in council chambers. Good morning, Mr. Johnson.
Good morning, sir. Councilman, my name is Oscar Johnson. I speak for the press, and I speak for culture change. I'd like to know, we should end our excessive force through law enforcement. Our deputy sheriff is shooting, and our sheriff deputies is shooting and murdering unarmed black people. We shouldn't have no need for the sheriff deputies to patrol the city. That is a waste of money to give deputy cars to patrol the city. The only thing is, the only acts is immoral acts. They are not legal, they are not on paper. We should end corruption in government, end government waste. We should make our elected officials be accountable for their actions. There should be some type of consequences of our actions. We shouldn't let our taxpayer and the citizen of Los Angeles stay in the dark. We should send all illegal immigrants back to where they come from, and let African America, black America, white America solve America problems. We have a new president today, President Barack Obama. He speaks around Africa, he speaks in the Middle East. He's saying that corruption and infidelities, and ineffectivity is because poverty and undevelopment in Africa. That's true. But charity begins at home. We should clean up Skid Row. Skid Row shouldn't be no place for women and children to be hanging around and filth and indecency and drugs. There should be a better behavior set for women and children today in LA. We need jobs, we need job training. We need a fair government, we need a just government, we need an economic racism throughout America. We need better bus transportation. The city of Los Angeles deserves a better bus transportation than the transportation that Mary Vegas is providing them. We need job training, we need families. We need our males to be more accountable for the moral action they are taking against females today. The way these females are being treated today with the moral things in government and society, and society has been made a wayfair society, not America way. The American way is truth and justice, is not a wayfair and a give and a handout to the country.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. John Walsh is our last speaker for public comment. Good morning.
Good morning. John Walsh posting at HollywoodHighlands.org. We're happy to tell you, in our third full month, GoDaddy, our server, tells us that this month we are on track for 17,000 hits in the month of September, and I thank all you people watching this. You don't have to, you have to watch me here, you don't have to go to our website. Okay, we tell you things you don't know about. Did you know that it was a taser killing of a train rider at the North Hollywood Station? Only City News Service covered it. We are tomorrow to ask the mayor, and one TV station. He was shot three times. He didn't respond when he was asked for his fare. We found out, the reason he didn't respond was his English wasn't good enough, and he didn't understand, that's what we hear, the sheriff. We want a full investigation. Another sheriff killing. As far as the Alsaldo Breda cars that are being tested on the east sideline, that's Stephen Bing, now the Transportation Deputy's company, Shangri-La, at the MTA committee meetings, we're understanding they're having a million problems, and they have had to postpone the opening indefinitely, a month or two, for the Breda cars, because they're not operating. And not only does Steve Hyman, the LA Times reporter, get a job with you with Alarcon, he is now working for MTA. I want people to know, there are some good reporters here, but when you talk to them, don't be a whistleblower, because the person you're whistleblowing to may be working for the person you're whistleblowing on. And finally, HollywoodHighlands.org has handicapped the race. This is the race for mayor in 2013, the top eight candidates, and who we think now is the three-to-one favorite to win the election. If you go to HollywoodHighlands.org, check the September three post, find out who the next mayor is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That will end our general public comment. We've had a request of the three commissioners to go first to item number 19, which is the appointment of our police commissioner. Before we ask our nominee to come up, we have some cards as well. Why don't we take those at the outset? Arnold Sacks is our first speaker. Why did you wait? We'll take public comment first. After Mr. Sacks will be Michael Hunt, and after that is John Walsh.
Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Another appointee to the LAPD, LA City Police Commission. So here's a question. In this article from the LA Times dated August 13th, regarding an LAPD detective tied to second officer-involved shooting. I'm going to pass through that information, he was involved in a shooting. He was also involved in a second shooting. First shooting, this first one occurred in 1997. It was reviewed by the civilian panel that oversees the LAPD. They cleared the officer of any wrongdoing. But, four years later, however, evidence not seen by the panel surfaced in a civil trial and showed that the suspect had his hands in the air when the detective fired. The suspect wasn't aiming a weapon at the officer, the jury found, but instead had been trying to surrender. So where does that leave the commission? What kind of work does a commission do? Or what kind of work can a commission do when it doesn't get full disclosure? Open transparency, like our lovable City Council, always seems to triumph. What kind of work is that? Or maybe you were here when they had a hearing on the rape DNA crisis. Every kid is a DNA rape case. If that was the case, there'd be like 100,000 rapes in the city of LA. But where were you when the detective, Lieutenant, I believe, or Captain Beck, head of the agency, said, "Well, we have a backlog, because we used to have a policy that stated if the detective's been asked for follow-up work to be done, then it was held up." Again, something for the police commission to look into? I doubt it. Not with this city council, this city.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Michael Hunt is our next speaker.
Thank you, thank you. LAPD, they have earned my respect in the Board of Commissions. As of last Friday, a great thing that really came about with the LAPD, so they're moving in a forward way with me. And Ms. Deborah Wong is a good candidate for this job. I want to thank Chief McDonnell for returning my call and informing me that he would help me with a community-based police team, which means a lot right now to the Venice Beach issue. The Board of Commission, I really hope that once you get appointed, that you really protect the rights of people, and you really make sure that your primary concern is the citizens of Los Angeles. And to Chief McDonnell, keep up the good work, keep returning your phone calls, and you will even see that you probably be chief of police, too. With that, like I said, I have the utmost respect when you return my phone calls, and you sit down with me, and you mitigate in a responsible way. Thank you from the LA Police Department, and thank you from the LA Police Commission.
Our last speaker is John Walsh, on this item.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, 17,000 in September projected. You know, this is one big happy family. Deborah Yang was the U.S. Attorney. She did nothing about corruption. She did not, there was no local corruption charges against politicians and this is a payoff. Now the person, the mayor's office, which they was, she was supposed to be investigating, appoints her what? To the police commission. Do you understand how this works? However, when Thomas O'Brien went after Mark Ridley Thomas, went after Monica Garcia, this is the following U.S. Attorney, when he went after those people, he got booted out. By who? Barack Obama. Now Ms. Yang is, did her job and now she's getting her reward. She looked the other way and now she's on, and this helps, Manat Phelps gives them clout. Thank you. That's who she's working for. One minute.
That will close our general public comment. I'd like to invite our nominee forward to the table. If you may join us here and I want to thank you for your interest in serving. Why don't you go ahead and start with making an introductory statement, your interest in serving on the police commission. Thank you.
Certainly, thank you. And good morning to everybody on the council. I have been a longstanding person who's interested in public service. As you know, I was in public service for 17 years, both as a municipal court and Superior Court Judge, and prior to that as a federal prosecutor and then as a United States Attorney. But above and beyond that, I'm a native Angelino who was born just literally a few blocks away from here and grew up literally in less than a mile from where we sit today. And so what occurs in this particular city is very important to me. And I look at the police commission right now as being a tremendous challenge and something that's very exciting. It's very exciting that they're finally out from under the consent decree and that some of the responsibilities under that consent decree, Judge Feist has moved over to the police commission. It's also a very important time because of the selection of the new police chief. So because of my longstanding interest in law enforcement and in the city, I really would love to serve on this particular commission for all four million of us.
Thank you very much. We have four council members who are on the queue so far, Ms. Perry, Mr. Zine, Ms. Han and Mr. Labange. Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm very excited about the appointment of Ms. Yang. I think it's an intelligent appointment. Her background is extremely well-suited to do this sort of commission work and I expect that she will provide a framework, given her life experience, her legal background and her scholarly work as well, that will go to great benefit for the city of Los Angeles. So I know this is going to be an excellent opportunity for us to have a really good commissioner on the police commission.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
You've done everything in the public safety arena except being a police officer.
This is as close as I can get.
This is as close and it's wonderful, the policy mix of the LAPD. I've known you for many years and highly regarded in the community as an individual who knows what she's doing. I remember the news conferences you had at the U.S. Attorney's Office going after some of the gangsters in our community. So a strong career in law enforcement, a strong career in protecting the people of this region. So I highly recommend and I commend the mayor for nominating you for the position as police commissioner. You join some other wonderful people on that commission. I think you know some of those people for a long period of time and they're all as committed as you to make sure the department stays on the right track and does the right activity for the people of this city. So congratulations. No question you got my support and my vote. Good seeing you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Ms. Han is next, followed by Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of your appointment to this commission. I think it's a very critical time in the history and the future of LAPD. And as you said, we're now out from under what some in the department felt was an oppressive burden to try to continue to spend resources on complying with. However, the spirit of that is certainly something I think the residents of Los Angeles would want to see continued in the reform and accountability of our police department. You know, Chief Bratton is leaving. You're going to be there as we go through the process of picking a new chief. I will tell you for many of the residents that I represent in the 15th District, there has been, in my opinion, an unprecedented transformation in the relationship between the officers of LAPD and the community, particularly in South Los Angeles and in Watts. And, you know, crime is down, I think the police morale is up, but the bringing back of the community-based policing has been such a key part, I think, of Bratton's tenure. And that's what I believe, long-term, has actually helped to foster lower crime rates in the city. The community is depending on the police, the police are depending on the community. I just want to make sure that that is something that you and your fellow commissioners continue to push the department forward in. We don't want to lose that because it's pretty significant. And I'd love to hear your thoughts on that. And also Chief Bratton said that we can't arrest our way out of gang violence. If we, as a city, don't really begin to understand the root causes of gang membership and why kids are being pressured to join a gang, then we're never going to, I think, end gang violence in Los Angeles. We need to grow up a generation of young people who will choose not to join a gang. Let's diminish their membership by prevention. And that's something I think the police department can and should also be involved in. So I'd love to hear your thoughts on those issues, but I think you're going to bring a great perspective. You have a wonderful background. I think it's a perfect point for you in your life and your career to do this service. So we thank you for that.
Thank you. With respect to just the community policing, I talked to the mayor about that because that's something that's been a signature part of what Chief Bratton has done and it's had a lot of success. I can't speak to it because I'm not completely versed in that particular arena, but I can tell you that philosophically, it's something that I greatly support. I've actually been one of those who actually grew up with the gangs, so I don't necessarily have a personal view that gang membership automatically means that you're a bad person. I don't. I actually think that there are very few opportunities that people who grow up in certain communities have and that we have a responsibility to offer them a way out and a different way. And then there's, it's a complicated relationship. Sometimes it's familial, there's longstanding, you know, reasons for that. But it's changed. It's changed in modern days in large part because of some of the drug trade and some of the violence that other gangs have brought into the area. So that is something that stays near and dear to my heart. And the community policing is sort of a part of that because it's an extension of it. In Los Angeles, we're a huge city and we're a melting pot and it's not necessarily one-size-fits-all, even though you have to do that sometimes to administrate through things, but sometimes it needs a tweak to make it right and to make it fit right. And I think that's part of the reason why community policing's been successful and why it's important for the officers to actually have a relationship with the community leaders, to have that dialogue so they know exactly what's going on and they're making the tweaks and understanding things in the right way.
Great, I appreciate that. I'd love to invite you to the Watts Gang Task Force. We meet in Watts on every Monday morning and I think you will get, you'll get great support, but you'll also, I think, hear a lot of views from this community on how important the relationship is between them and the men and women of LAPD.
Okay, great, thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Labange. After that is Mr. Corretts, Mr. Rosenau, Mr. Weezer and Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. You have a great background, a great history and congratulations on all your success. Look for the future. You grew up here, what high school did you go to?
Eagle Rock High School.
Eagle Rock High School, an eagle from Eagle Rock. So and then through your days, living in Los Angeles and around, you've had a feel for it. Diversity is extremely important to our city and as Ms. Han spoke about the transformation of the LAPD, I think, I think from your heart, you'll know how that has to keep in the focus all the time as it is always the city of the people, that we're so concerned about and how we serve them as well. A big issue is after our public safety and public safety is real important and homeland security is real important, hometown security is real important, but a big issue is traffic and how it affects it. As a new commissioner, I think the Los Angeles Police Department hasn't, they've done an excellent job the last several years, but traffic, which is a very big issue and they have a component to that with their officers because there's the three E's of traffic, education, engineering and enforcement, should have discussions on it. So I could hope you could carry that as you go forward. And do you have anything else you want to add to your experience as a prosecutor with the federal government and how you see local, you know, because you saw a wide range of areas, you covered the West.
I'm somewhat familiar with what's been going on on the local level, both because of the response to 9/11 and some of the things that we had to do as far as protecting sort of the city in that regard, some of the relationships between different police departments and law enforcement agencies and the like. And the same thing with, on the violent crime level because that was an area that I spent a great amount of attention on just because it was so problematic and we needed to get federal law enforcement involved. So for example, there were times where we would do DEA rollouts or ATF rollouts and it didn't fix the problem, but it assisted local law enforcement. And that gave me an opportunity to see exactly what they were dealing with on a day-to-day basis. And finally, I saw it as a judge because I sat as a supervising judge in Hollywood for a period of time and here downtown in what used to be called CCV and now it's Clarish Shortridge Falls Building. But the number of misdemeanor crimes and the kinds of things that would occur and the things that law enforcement would have to deal with as they were rubbing up against, you know, a population that was becoming more homeless and then where the drug usage was increasing and some of the difficulties that that presented to them.
Right. So I think all that background will only help and benefit you. Thank you for your service to the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much. It's nice to see you.
Thank you.
Mr. Corretts is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm proud to have you here as a 5th District resident and impressed with your background. I think, as I recall, you're somewhat of a pioneer as the first Asian-American woman as a U.S. Attorney. We're all proud of that. And of course I support your candidacy for this, but I want to ask you a couple harder questions because we're in tough budget times and there's certainly some questions about deployment of the department. One of the questions is, we have 10,000 police officers, but I understand seven or 800 of them are doing things that civilians could do in a more cost-effective way. How do you think we should address that situation?
You know, I'm not, I'm not able to sort of answer that today. I know that when you and I met previously, that was a concern that you raised with me and it's been in the back of my head as far as, as we go through budget cuts and as you parse through trying to ascertain where you can actually trim back. There's different ways. I can tell you that I will be open-minded and that I'm going to take a full look at everything. I'd love to have a further discussion with you about that in the future, but sort of given all the parameters of what LAPD has to deal with right now, I don't think I have an answer to that. It's just that, you know, something's going to have to go and it's a question of how best to do that so you keep public safety at a high level, you try to keep morale at a high level, but you also, you know, live in a realistic budget declining situation, which is always difficult. I mean, I had to do that when I was on the federal side of things. It was like, it's starting off when the economy was somewhat high and then every year you're cutting back, you're cutting back your staff, you're cutting back law enforcement, you see it cut back in law enforcement, you start to see the effects of it, you know, within a year or two after you make implementation. And those are some pretty heavy decisions, but I look forward to doing them in a responsible manner and with an open mind.
And another deployment question, we also have had a question for a while about deployment of LAPD officers at the airport because there's an LAPD trained contingent as airport police and those are paid for by the airport and then we have an LAPD contingent paid for by us that would seem to duplicate the same functions. Have you given any thought to what we could do about that situation?
I have not. I will take a look at that. One of the things that I do recall is that after 9/11, we had the incident at the airport where we had a number of law enforcement responding and there were different needs and there was some discussion back then, I believe with Chief Bratton too, as far as parsing out the roles. I didn't follow that through to find out exactly what the airport police are doing and what the LAPD officers are doing, but that's something that's sort of in the back of my mind as far as what's the allocation of what is it that you're responsible for and is there an overlap or is there an actual pressing need for that?
Okay, and one last question, which Ms. Han touched on. We've been very successful in making some significant reforms at the LAPD and we've now gotten out from under the consent decree. How do we keep that reform-minded effort without the guidance of that consent decree sort of forcing us in that direction? How do we keep the department heading in the right direction?
I think one will be with the selection of the next chief and that leadership role. And then the rest of it falls into two buckets. There are things that were accomplished under the consent decree that sort of are no longer issues and it's a question of maintaining it and maintaining it at that high level and the degree of training, recruitment and mostly training because a lot of those issues had to do with use of force and some policy, and the policy changes that went into effect. The second bucket is the stuff that did not get completed under the consent decree. That includes some of the racial profiling issues, that includes the teens too, some of the early warning systems and things like that. And that takes some examination as to how you finish and implement those things so that they're still at a high degree and a high level. I will tell you that Councilwoman Han is absolutely correct. We have come a long way with LAPD. As I go around the country now and deal with other law enforcement agencies, many members of LAPD are known to be the experts and the cutting-edge experts of how to do things correctly and they're tapped for those resources by other police departments and I want to see that continue. I mean, I want them to continue to be sort of the, one of the crown jewels in this country as far as local law enforcement's concerned.
Well, thank you and thank you for your willingness to serve and I look forward to working with you on all these issues.
Thank you, sir. I look forward to seeing you.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Mr. Rosenau is our next speaker, to be followed by Mr. Weezer, Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Alarcon.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, thank you for stepping up and doing this. And again, this is one of Mayor Viragosa's legacies, putting good people on commissions and boards and general managers of departments. I've never seen such a diversity and such a group of true class act people on these commissions. So hats off to the mayor and hats off to you. On the sidebar, we had a little conversation. There were two issues of concern with me. We have come a long way with the LAPD in terms of diversity, reflecting the communities we serve. It's extraordinarily better today than it was 15 years ago or so. But there are two areas that I still want to see more progress. One are the number of women in the uniform and I know we've done a lot of outreach. Do you have any sense of how we can up that percentage? Because to me, women are nurturers, you know, and I think in this situation, they can add an element that men just don't have. I think the diversity of gender is a beautiful reality and more women in LAPD, the happier I'll be. Any sense about that?
You know, nothing would warm my heart more than having more women in law enforcement because when I was a U.S. Attorney, I can tell you sometimes I was a little lonely. But having said that, I think, you know, the way that LAPD has been recruiting as far as diversity is concerned, I would want to take a close look at that and see whether or not that could be expanded and sort of piggyback onto the success of some of those measures. And sometimes it has to do with outreach in to particular areas where you're actually going to net more. So I don't know what it is, but I will take a look at that and see if there's ways in which we can at least get ourselves in front of other groups that maybe we haven't gotten in front of before.
Another area I'd like you to look at is the gay and lesbian element. Again, the department has done tremendous outreach. There are a lot of openly gay and lesbian officers, but there's also some backstories that come to me where people feel at certain points within their career, their career is stopped or they get into a conflict situation and rumors go around and that kind of thing. Would you take a look at the teaching modules at the LAPD Academy and let me know how they're dealing internally with the gay and lesbian community and also externally, how they're relating to the greater community?
Okay, I would love to. And also if there's things that come up anecdotally that are at a level that you think it's something that I should know about or that are emblematic of things that may be a little bit more systematic, please call me.
I should well.
Because I don't necessarily, I'm the mother of three small children, so I don't get out as much as I need to. So that helps me sort of send a red flag as to things that I need to look at.
I look forward to the partnership and again, thank you for stepping up.
Great, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you. And...
Thank you. And looking at your background and knowing about your background, really happy to see this appointment and just hearing what you're saying here today. I'm really excited to have your background, your expertise, life experience on the commission. We talked a lot about the consent decree and how we've come a long way in implementing the decree and seeing a change in the police department for the better. However, just a couple of years ago, we did see an incident at MacArthur Park where after an immigrant rights march, some of those individuals at the park were unfairly, I don't know if the right word is attacked, but they were attacked by some of our officers. And again, I think our officers overall are doing a tremendous job and are doing a great job. But there we saw an incident where we weren't properly trained. We saw an incident that perhaps some of our officers did go out of their line of duty. Any thoughts on that, and how does that fit in with our progress we've done on the consent decree?
I think that one of the things that was key about that, because in a city like ours, we're gonna, those things are gonna come up. And hopefully, they're not in that way. But there's going to be some frictions and some learning and some understandings as we sort of move to a better place. And I think part of the response, the quick response that took place helped to instill confidence back in the public so that they felt like it was an aberration and not endemic of another attitude, and that it was dealt with, you know, internally and properly as far as from the police department. And when you have that in place, that's what starts to give the citizenry faith and a belief that it's fair and that it's not one-sided, and that you don't have to be fearful, and that actually you can trust law enforcement. So those actions afterwards were just as important as the fact that there was not training, because you have to look at it sort of as a complete episode. And I think that that, albeit it was a bad thing that occurred, it could have been so much worse. And so also, part of this is how we handle it as a city. So those things are going to happen. It's just the nature of where we live. And part of that is to make sure that you train people properly. You start to have a cycle through. Many of the officers are younger, newer, and so they're not, judgment is different, you know, as you become a little bit more seasoned. And part of it is giving them time to get up into the system, but training them, because you have to train them when they're younger and give them the tools so that they know that, you know, rather than just one response, one physical response, that there are other ways to respond, that there's different ways in which you reach escalation under a use-of-force module, and that there's different ways for you to deal with conflict and a heated situation.
Thank you. And I agree with you. I think how the city responded, all the way from our Chief Bratton, who took this very seriously and took a lot of responsibility for what happened as well, that was just as important as what happened. So hopefully, we don't see something to that magnitude again. But you're right, in a large urban area like ours, we're bound to see something similar like that. Finally, I want to echo something Ms. Han brought up. In our community, in my district, and particularly in an area like Boyle Heights in Osceola, our community has developed great relationships with our officers. We have a lot of support for our officers. You know, our senior lead officers know the community, they're part of the community, and we're, it hasn't always been that way. And we're hoping that with the transition of a new chief, the culture that we've seen created in these communities continues. I think that's going to be very, very important, that we get someone who understands that policing is not done by the city hall downtown, by these walls downtown. Policing is really done in the community, on the street, neighbor by neighbor, house by house, getting to know individuals, building those relationships. That's as much prevention as anything else that I've seen when we get to know one another. So thank you for giving of your time. We know how demanding law practice can be, but we appreciate you giving to the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas is next.
Congratulations on your nomination. I have a request of you. The City Council of Los Angeles finally put together a definition for intervention. Intervention, prevention, reentry. If you asked 1,000 Americans what reentry is, you probably get about 999 different answers. If you ask them what prevention is, you probably get about the same amount of varied answers. If you ask somebody what reentry is, you get about the same thing. And then when you go one step deeper and you ask people, well, what good is it, or what value does it have, you probably get about the same number of different answers. But what we did as a city and through the City Council is we actually put together a very involved, very well-thought-out, very well-informed intervention model, which describes intervention activities, describes different components of what intervention is, and it's something that is now being considered by many other cities, Washington DC, as far as deciding when we fund programs and they call themselves intervention, perhaps they need to apply themselves to this model. So what I would like to ask of you, being that you're looking to be on the police commission, to go ahead and read that model and try to understand it. But more importantly, from your perspective, try to be critical of it and try to understand perhaps some things that are missing, or some things that don't make sense, or some things that are not spoken to. For example, the relationship between intervention and police departments, policing, et cetera. I think it's very important because Chief Bratton, the top brass within LAPD, many of the council members here, agree that intervention is part of the solutions that we need to have toward reducing crime, crime activity, violent crime, et cetera. Whether it's gang crime, whether it's crime that happened in certain parts of town or what have you, intervention certainly is part of the equation. The police chief and many of us agree, the police chief said, and we all agree, that you cannot arrest your way out of the problem that we have with gangs. You can't arrest yourself out of the problem that we have with our juveniles across the board. We just don't have enough police to do so, to take care of every incident in that manner. We just don't have enough jails. We don't have enough prisons. And with all due respect, we will never have enough taxpayer dollars ready to be spent if that's going to be the solution. So I would like to ask of you if you would please take the time to read the intervention model and to also sit down with me, give me your opinion, as I was the author of it, along with my colleagues who added to it as well. But to please dialogue with me and let me know what you think, what you like about it, what you don't like about it. And we're always open to making sure that we improve it at every turn. Could you do that?
I look forward to that, sir.
Wonderful. Thank you.
It's actually, I'm actually very, you've piqued my interest, because when I was a very young lawyer, I actually used to do volunteer work at some of the holding facilities for some of the juveniles. So a lot of the dialogue had to do with just the pressures of their lives, families that were broken, difficulties because parents were hard at work and not around, and the vulnerability that some of the kids even felt when they went back into the communities and back into their homes, and all of that. So I'm well aware and acutely aware of the fact that ways in which you can come in and offer alternatives are really important, and really important at certain times in someone, in a child's life, and child, I mean, under 18. So I'm curious to see what it is that you've done with that and how that dovetails with some of those issues that I've seen in the past. So look forward to that.
Oh, there's a relationship. Thank you. And also, perhaps you and I can commit to having a series of meetings, both you and I, and also with some of the people who gave a lot of the information to creating this intervention model, intervention workers, and some of the people in law enforcement and in the justice system, to talk about how this is a tool that perhaps we could all utilize better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. First of all, thank you for your work and contribution in the city of L.A., in particular, the Chinese-American museum. It's been a long process, and to see that museum reach its new heights, hold new thresholds, really attributed to folks like you who never gave up. My question is more pertinent to what the city's challenges are today. In particular, this policy that we're trying to define, dealing with medical marijuana in dispensaries, there's a big discussion going on. And for me, the most important element is implementation. And one of the possibilities of how this will get implemented is to work with the police commission to see if they play a role in reviewing these locations, whether in the permit process, or however we define that. But I want to get from you your sense of, does the police commission have a role in that discussion? I mean, folks sometimes say, well, the liquor store license process goes to police commission. Why shouldn't this? Since our parallels and its impact and its controls. But I want to get your opinion and just get your perspective on that issue.
The medical marijuana issue is a huge one, and one that I had to deal with as a U.S. Attorney because federal law was in contrast with state law. And so trying to marry the two together was always a difficult situation and a lot of conversations between me and Washington DC. So I can, I can well understand that. I don't know whether or not LAPD itself, you know, or the police commission, what particular role you would ask of them or that you would need. I'm happy to have a separate discussion with you. I have a lot of strong opinions, personal opinions on that, based on things that I've seen in the past. I do know that, and I've read the articles where it said that, you know, in, you know, to get a permit in the city of San Francisco costs, you know, X amount of dollars, and because the number is so much more exorbitant than LA, LA's got that many more clinics that have opened. That's sort of anecdotal, but that sort of shows you sort of the space between where you could be and where we are. And I think the thing that's been problematic for me is that just being out in public, contrary to how I look today, when I'm on the weekends, my hair's in a ponytail, and I look very unassuming, very unassuming, and very schlubby. And so teenage kids, you know, who are friends of my, friends of my own friends, tell me all the time, oh, you know, it's so easy for me to get marijuana, you know, because I just get a prescrip, and I'm like, ah, don't tell me that, don't tell me that. But it's in that dialogue, and that means that it's not enough, that something needs to be done.
We need stronger controls, and I need the city family to step up to the plate in all of its departments so we can be doing our due diligence as public servants to take back our streets and promote the type of controls that are necessary to facilitate a process that allows those who are truly in need, those who are suffering from cancer and AIDS and all the other ailments, to use it as a medicine without having others abuse and gain the process. So I just need to get your perspective. As a future police commissioner, I'll be asking how we can implement, and I'll be looking to you and the commission for your point of view. But thank you very much.
All right. Great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That's the last speaker on the Q. So with that, it's time for our vote. Madam Clerk, if you'll please open the roll on this nomination, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
A unanimous vote. Congratulations, and welcome aboard, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. I look forward to it, and I look forward to working with everybody. It's very much a privilege and an honor.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. If we can take up the other two commissioners next, item four, and like to recognize Councilmember Reyes, the Chair of our Planning Land Use Management Committee, and invite Lydia Mather up to the table. Sorry, Ms., Mr. Smith and Ms. Han, can we just move a little bit to the side for our next Commissioner nomination? Thank you. Come on over to the table and recognize Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning, Ms. Mather.
Good morning.
Good to see you again. Ms. Mather did appear before the planning committee, and I did ask her a couple of questions, and perhaps if you'd like to share your response. And the question was, what did you want to see as you leave the planning commission in the, in the future? What impact you would like to see, and share some of your thoughts with my colleagues, please.
Well, I want to say good morning to everyone. And I think specifically, I was talking, we spoke about where we're going to put people. And because my response was, I think that people who have invested in the city of Los Angeles, making their home here, should be allowed to have a certain expectation of continuity in their lives. And we talked about where we'll put people, and we talked about how I don't believe in the notion of creating ghettos of high density for the sake of high density. I think economic parity can all live in one community. We can talk about open space and real livability for people.
Are there any statements or thoughts you'd like to share with the council that we didn't cover?
Well, I'm honored to be here. We didn't cover that yesterday. I'm very surprised that I've been tapped for this, and I deeply appreciate that the mayor went to the community. I'm currently my planning and land use chair for my neighborhood council. I am the president of Van Nuys Neighborhood Council, and the founder of the first historic zone in the San Fernando Valley. And so this process has been close to my heart for more than a decade.
Ms. Mather, I want to say thank you for your hard work. I do agree with you that we should not have economic ghettos. We should find a way to establish compatibility with existing neighborhoods, whether they be historical, or one-bedroom, or just bedroom communities in general. Hopefully, focus our densities along transit corridors and complementary areas that can sustain this population base. But our challenge really is about addressing areas that I'm familiar with, where I have in some parks in my district, up to 70,000 people per square mile. The city averages 6,000 to 8,000. So there is a range of conditions that we have to address that require a whole range of solutions. It's not a one-size-fits-all situation. So I appreciate your support, your work, and I recommend a yes from Ms. Mather, and hope to work with you soon.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Other council members wishing to ask any questions on the nomination? If not, I think the breadth of your work speaks for itself, and thank you. I'd like to reiterate what Mr. Reyes said. Thank you for stepping up and offering to serve, and let's see if we can make this official. So with that, let's prepare the roll on this nomination. I'm sorry, before that, we have a late entry. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. Ms. Mather, you've done a wonderful job in many respects for the community of the San Fernando Valley, and I know your heart is with the Van Nuys community. And I just wanted to let everybody know that you've been extremely active on many issues, such as when it comes to creating the first historic preservation zone for the San Fernando Valley. Some people might remember that I was the first council member that ever got that done in the valley, but the same, but I just want to make it very clear, I might be the councilman, but I would have not have done it had it not been for you and your diligence, and you being willing to explain all of the different aspects, some of the burdens that come with it, but also, at the same time, the tremendous benefit to the historical issues that Van Nuys is, in fact, very proud of. A lot of people don't realize it. When they drive by some of these beautiful homes or these beautiful buildings, they kind of like it, they smile, but they don't realize that sometimes it takes a little bit of formal effort to make sure that we preserve them. And one of the things that I wanted to let you know that, in case there's rumors out there, and I'm sure you may have heard them, there's rumors that when we vacate, if everything goes well, we'll be vacating Station 39, which is right there at the Van Nuys Civic Center. What's your understanding of what's going to happen to the building, should we find another spot to put our firefighters, a bigger lot, a modern building, to be paid for by the bond that was passed by the voters to build fire stations? And fortunately, we have enough money to go ahead and build the one that we need, we need for Van Nuys. What is your understanding that's going to happen to the old Station 39? It was built in 1939.
I don't know, but I figured I was going to get on board and try to see if we could at least protect the facade of that building. I hadn't gone into it too deeply. What I do understand about that decision, a lot of people were upset because they thought, well, it's Central Van Nuys, we need that there. But it's on Sylvan Street, which is a small street. We need, we need somewhere that's better for our fire department to deploy in an emergency than coming out of that small.
And also, the lot is too small for the facilities that the firefighters need, and the building is, in fact, old and is not suited for today's firefighter services. So the bottom line is, we are thankful for the fact that the bond can, in fact, address that issue for Van Nuys. It will be addressed. It's already programmed. But my wife was telling me yesterday, she goes, why are you going to destroy a 1939 building? And I'm thinking to myself, I never, I wasn't for that. So I'm talking to her.
I didn't think you were.
She, she checks my name, you know, on the internet or what have you, to see what's going out there around my name. And somebody in Contra Costa did a whole article, not talking about the historical preservation zone. preservation zone that you worked on and that we worked on together, and it was the first one for the valley. They didn't mention all the good stuff, but they just went on and on and on how we're going to destroy a building from 1939. And that's just not the case. Over and over and over, just like the library down the street on Sylvan, over and over, when we have those as surplus property, we make sure that we put them back out to market if we don't need it for city purposes. But at the same time, it does become a historical landmark, and the new owner has to understand, they have to work within the confines of those responsibilities and preserve the historic nature of the building. So I just wanted to make sure, in case that rumor got to you, because obviously this person who wrote for this Contra Costa thing doesn't know what they're talking about, but they certainly went on and on and on trying to alarm us, the community of Van Nuys, that we're going to destroy this beautiful, beautiful building from 1939, of which is not the case, it's not in the plans, not by the fire department, not by any department within the city of Los Angeles. Should that become surplus property, like the library down the street, it will be put into private hands if somebody's willing to pay the price. At the same time, they're going to have to honor and preserve that building just like anybody else would. So once again, I want to thank you for your diligence and for being the conscious of Van Nuys when it comes to the historical nature of our buildings and our community. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
Well, I would like to say, I never had a knee-jerk reaction to a report like that. I was certainly going to wait until I knew more about it. On a different note, I'd like to thank you for your continued support over the last several years in getting us that historic zone, and understanding that that historic zone was more than buildings. It was about protecting a community from some unconscionable development, and it was how we saved it. And it's about how neighborhoods emerged in the San Fernando Valley. We cover 10 architectural styles in 40 years, so it's not about architecture per se, it's about stability. It's about, and communities need stability, and planning should be about some of that.
Thank you, and also.
And I want to thank you.
I appreciate the compliment, it doesn't happen very often in these chambers, but thank you very much. But also, I want the public to know that Lydia Mathers didn't compliment the Councilman for the area that she lives in because she's being appointed. Lydia Mathers and Tony Cardenas haven't always agreed on everything.
This is very true.
But the one thing that I appreciate about you as a citizen and an active member of the community, like you said, you don't have knee-jerk reactions. You actually call me, we talk about things, we work things out, and what you tend to do is communicate to the rest of the community what the truth is, and I just want to thank you for that. I thank you for the compliment, but the compliment goes to you. You would not understand me as a Councilman if you weren't the kind of person that you are, and I really appreciate the fact that you always are willing to talk and dialogue. And with all due respect, I think that's one of the biggest problems when it comes to international issues or a simple local issue about what's going on on the corner right down the street from your home. It is the lack of dialogue and the lack of people's willingness to find out the facts before they go and say, "I disagree with you." So thank you very much, and I think you're going to do a wonderful job on this Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. With that, let's go ahead and prepare the roll. Please tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Congratulations, the hard work continues. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I'm very honored.
Thank you very much. If we can take up our last Commission nomination, Ms. Yolanda Roscoe for the City Planning Commission. Is Ms. Roscoe here? Come on forward, there you are. I'd like to recognize again the Chair of our Plumb Committee, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you again, Council President. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Ms. Yolanda Roscoe, who has been selected by the mayor to fulfill the vacancy by Cindy Montanez on the Citywide Planning Commission. And I wanted to ask if you could just share a little bit about yourself, your background, and what you would like to see accomplished as a Commissioner in this particular Planning Commission.
Thank you. Good morning, and thank you all. It is a privilege and an honor to be here. I'll give you a brief overview of my background. I've been a practicing attorney for about 30 years, not about, it's exactly 30 years, and for 28 of those years, I've been a lawyer here in Los Angeles, I'm a partner at Jones Day. Throughout my legal career, I have always, living under the motto of giving back, I have done a lot of civic and charitable work throughout my legal career, starting in the early '90s when I was a Deputy General Counsel for the Christopher Commission. It was interesting listening to Deb Yang's presentation, because it was the Christopher Commission's report which I think presented the outline, if you will, of the reforms that continued after that and under the consent decree. Most recently, I've been appointed by Senator Dianne Feinstein on her Judicial Screening Committee for federal applicants to the federal court here in Los Angeles and to the U.S. Attorney's Office, and I've done a lot of work all of the years in between. This is a unique opportunity for me, having been a 28-year resident of Los Angeles, a city that I love very much. I'm keenly aware of all of the challenges the city faces, and it seems to me that the Planning Department and the work of the Planning Commission touches upon all of the major issues that affect the city, from growth to affordable housing, to the need for more open spaces and recreational areas, the green technology, which I know the City Council and the mayor are very, very interested in pursuing it and fostering those efforts. I come to the Planning Commission with not a lot of expertise on planning, but a lot of eagerness to learn, eagerness to face the challenges. I think I bring the intellect and the rigor to take on what I'm told is hard work, and not always easy work. I look forward to working with all the members of the City Council and the Commission, and certainly the city and the City Planning Department, and I'm honored again to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roscoe, and in particular, my colleagues, the city has to brace itself for the budget cuts that are anticipated. We're going to be challenged on, just on the personnel level. Many folks will be considering the retirement packages. Our ability to respond to our needs are going to be at a historical level in terms of our workload compared to our ability to have personnel. So I look forward to working with you, because those will be like one example of one of the challenges we have, and I look forward to working with you, and I recommend an aye vote for Mr. Roscoe, and thank you for your contribution to this great city. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Any other members wishing, asking any questions for our nominee? If not, let's go ahead then and take a vote. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Congratulations, and welcome aboard as well.
Thank you very much, I look forward to working with all of you.
We do as well, thank you. If we can take up the next item called special, please.
Next item, Mr. President's, item number 12, and that was called special by Mr. Zine, and there is already a verbal amendment, and I believe there are other amendments that will be made on this.
Mr. Reyes, on number 12, just describe what we're doing here. This is on the hillside area ordinance, I'd like to recognize the Plumb Chair, and then after that, we have Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much, Council President. Colleagues, this is a policy action that has taken quite a bit of time, I can ask the staff to come on up, and I just want to give a review of the process that has been undertaken and the level of participation that the staff has actually committed to and performed when it came to going out into the city, out into the community, and actually engaging this question. But if you can just give us a real brief summary of what this policy action aims to accomplish.
Sure, thank you. Good morning, President Garcetti and Councilmembers, Betsy Wiseman for the Planning Department. The proposal that's in front of you today is actually to amend the zoning codes hillside area definition and to create new hillside area maps. This is the second step in the baseline mansionization program, and as directed by your council, the first step was applying baseline mansionization to the non-hillside areas. And then this second step was to more accurately depict and define what is hillside. When those maps were originally made a number of years ago, they were done, we didn't have the technology that we have today, so they were basically done, as some of you may remember, with using markers and putting those on paper maps. Today, what we're doing is refining them so that they accurately reflect those lots that have more than 15% slope. This will mean that on a number of lots, thousands will actually be removed from hillside areas on the maps, and then they will automatically become protected by baseline mansionization. The third step of the process is going forward and creating the regulations for those lots which are truly 15% slope or greater, and we've already started that process. So today, it's really just the maps, the technical revising of those maps and clarifying the definition is what's in front of you today. As far as, well, I'm just going to go on about outreach. We've had extensive outreach, starting with five initial public meetings, and then Eric and staff have gone out to all over the city to meet with individual groups, including neighborhood councils, homeowners groups, and all kinds of organizations, and we have a very large outreach list, and those folks, if anybody's been interested, has been on the email list, too.
If the five meetings you speak of, the public meetings you've had, where were they located? Were they in one area, throughout the city?
Let's see, we had Harbor, West Side, South Valley, North Valley, and Metro East Side.
Okay, and when it came to meetings with the various interest groups and stakeholders, do you have a rough number of how many meetings you've had throughout this process, between yourself and your staff?
Eric, what do we say, maybe 30, 40, 50? We've lost count, but it's been over a period of time, a number of meetings.
But close to 50 meetings with different stakeholders throughout the city?
Yes, and some of them were also discussing the Phase 3 hillside regulations, but this was discussed as well.
And how many times did it come to Planning Commission?
Once.
Once to commission and what, three times to plum?
Three times to plum.
Three times in plum. So we were drilling down on this issue for about three or four months?
Yes, at least.
As more issues popped up in Plumb Committee, we held it to address those concerns?
Yes, and we were able to resolve, there were a number of issues raised at Plumb by different groups of homeowners, and we've worked out those issues, I believe, so that we will continue if we find that there have been any errors made in these maps. In the process that we're going to be going through Step 3, which is the hillside regs, there would be the opportunity to fine-tune if we need to, you know, a couple of lots that we might...
Should new information.
Yeah, if new information comes in.
And that's one note I want to expand on. This is the beginning of a process, the phase we went through is to put everything on the table as we see it today, with the technology that we have today, but does not mean we don't have the capacity to go back and visit certain areas in respective districts if they are controversial, if there's a disagreement, or if there's another planning tool that we could use that gets to the objective of those particular interest groups and stakeholders, we have that flexibility. So this is essentially the first threshold of getting to those definitions, of acknowledging those geographic areas, but does not mean it stops there.
Exactly.
So we will continue to work with you, colleagues, with our areas that we need to address, bring those forward, we can do that through a motion, or we can do that through a discussion with the staff, and they can command the proper action. So again, there's a range of responses, so I don't want anyone to panic like, "Okay, it's set in stone, we're stuck with it." It's not. This is our first phase, and we can build upon what we know, and that way we can do this in the most appropriate legal format that allows us to get to those definitions and allocations of these different designations. So that is where we'd like to be. I'd like to see this move forward and build upon this as a baseline. And I ask you for an aye vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Rosendahl is next, and Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Zine, and Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm smiling because Mr. Reyes is my seatmate, and we get a chance, because we sit next to each other, like I also do with Mr. Smith, to compare notes and to get better understanding of things. I called it special, and Mr. Zine did it for me, in part because my communities in the northern part of my district are terribly engaged in issues that matter to them that have to do with hillside issues. So first, hats off to you, Ed, for your leadership on this and your patience over a long period of time, and to you, Betsy, and also to you, Eric, for what you guys have done. Just a couple of fine points for me. The Marquesa Knolls Homeowners Association, how this is the President topple, and her husband Kurt has taken hillsides as a major issue. The Brentwood Park Homeowners Association have been engaged in many aspects of this. So for my folks in both the Santa Monica Canyon area there, the Marquesa Knolls, the Castlemar area, and the Brentwood Hills areas, how does this impact them? And what should they be looking for in Phase 2?
Sure. They're affected by both Phases 2 and 3. What's in front of us today will take only those areas which are less than 15% slope, and they will get baseline mansionization protection immediately, which a number of the residents in your area have been very interested in and anxious to have that happen as quickly as possible, because some of them don't have the baseline mansionization protection. For the areas that are in the Palisades, in the steeper slopes like Castelamar and some of the other areas, they're going to be working with Eric and with staff and myself on Phase 3. As soon as this gets done, we can even concentrate more on Phase 3, which are the actual regulations and what we will, what FARs will be allowed, and what type of homes can be built in single-family zones in true hillside areas. So that's the next steps that we'll be working on, and we are under pressure to have those done as quickly as possible, because as you may remember, when your council passed mansionization in the first place, we had a two-year sunset clause that was put in. So we're aware of that and working to work as quickly as possible to bring those regulations back to the council, first to CPC.
Yeah, I really appreciate your leadership, too. You've been doing a great job on this, and McKeen is very happy about it. But another issue that I deal with in budget in closed sessions all the time, and then the full council goes into closed session here to talk about it, are some of those issues that have to do with hillsides that impact our city financially. I sometimes take a position, "Don't build there," to begin with, but yet we get hit with huge settlements. How do we avoid that kind of issue going forward? In other words, can we designate certain areas and say, "You can't build there, because if you build there, you know, we might be liable as a city when we really don't want that kind of liability"? How do we address those kinds of issues of hillsides?
Sure. Well, those are really the issues that we're going to be dealing with as we go forward with the regulations on the next phase. They're not what's in front of us today, so I'm not prepared with an answer for that. I certainly recognize that it is an issue, and we do have to allow, if something is illegal, a lot, there has to be something allowed to be built on it so that it's not a taking, but in terms of what it is and the size of it, that's exactly what we're going to be working on, and how it impacts the amounts of grading and all of those kinds of issues will be part of the hillside regs.
And I'm looking forward to that, as my second issue on that is views. Some people want to protect their view, but they don't really realize that they don't have that right, because across the street where there might not have been anything ever built before, that there is by right the opportunity for somebody else to build that would block their view. So that'll come out in those discussions, too.
Yes, exactly, and we will be looking at all of those issues as we do the hillside regs.
Very good. And I want to thank you both very much, and to my constituents in the Palisades and Brentwood, stay focused on this, because coming next will be the hillside issue that is so important to all of you.
And anybody who is interested in that can contact us, and will be put on the mailing list, the email list, and will be notified of all of the informational sessions and meetings in their area.
They can actually email me at erick.lopez@lacity.org, and I will add them to the list.
And folks, we'll put that on our website, too, so you know how to stay in contact and dialogue, because we will make a nice hillside ordinance, but we need your participation in it.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Cardenas, so, oh, over there.
I was, I had a question about it, but Councilmember Reyes answered it for me, so that's fine. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. The folks from the San Fernando Valley are concerned about modifications, and we have some folks from Tarzana that are here regarding that. The issue of modifications, as Mr. Reyes has said, and I am now the junior member of Plum, thank you, learning quickly through the guidance of Mr. Reyes, the seasoned veteran of Plum. When it comes to the modifications, the process that's going to be in place, is it going to be a simple process, or is it going to be a cumbersome process? Is it going to take forever to make those changes as those situations come about?
It'll be part of the ongoing process. They won't have to do it individually by filing any special application. It'll be part of the process as we go through the regs and bring forward the hillside regs. We can also modify the maps at that time. It's actually a change to the ordinance, and I'm sure, we are quite sure that there will be a need to make some fine tuning, that we're assuming that that will be part of the project.
So it will be a rather simple, easy process?
Yes.
Without a cost to the taxpayers?
No cost to the taxpayers. It would either be by a council motion, or we would just incorporate it if we find the need to do it.
And you were going to say?
Just that last part, as long as there's sufficient evidence to indicate that it is truly a hillside.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. Since we are amending this, and you're trying to take out properties that are flat and not part of hillside, may I make a verbal motion to move that the city attorney include in the final ordinance the following: to amend the hillside area map by removing a parcel within the Port of Los Angeles boundaries bounded by John S. Gibson Boulevard on the west and the west basin on the east. It is definitely flat port property.
Yes.
No hill about it, so...
Inadvertently put in.
Right, so I just want to make sure we remove that.
Thank you.
Correct, Mr. Kretz is our next speaker.
There was originally some question about outreach to some of the areas, like Sherman Oaks community. How did we do on outreach, and do you think the community is now satisfied that that's been adequately handled?
Right. We'll address that as we move forward in the process, but at this point, the Sherman Oaks folks have said that they are...
I believe it was our commitment for further discussion that had addressed that particular concern, as we stated earlier, to reconsider the proposals that they specifically brought forward.
Thank you. Any other questions from council members? If not, let's go ahead then, and as amended, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Thank you for your very hard work on this. Appreciate it. On behalf of all the residents of LA, next item, called special, please.
Next item's item twenty-one, and that was called special for cards.
Okay, item twenty-one is our next. We have Barbara Monahan Burke on item number twenty-one, if you'd like to come forward, and then Dr. Clyde Williams.
Barbara Monahan Burke, Studio City Neighborhood Council Board Member and Government Affairs Co-Chair. We would support this, this going forward, and would prefer to have it acted on soon instead of just filed away. It's important to have an office for the revitalization of the river, and as I see it here, it isn't going to be acted on, it's going to be filed. So we've worked on the river for years. We've been probably the most active community with it, and we support an office for it, including the engineering and the planning department. So when you can budget this office, we would appreciate it being up and running. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Dr. Clyde Williams is our next speaker, and then Arnold Sachs will follow.
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Surino. Note and file, please note, there's about a one, sorry, about a $10 billion grill is sitting in the closet called the High Speed Rail. The station for Union Station and its approaches will affect the LA River. This has not been well considered, and you have actually indicated that alternatives should be sought. Alternatives should be sought because it will affect especially the Oreo Seaco and all the way to State Route 134. There are alternative means of dealing with it. Put it underground. There are corridors available through Union Station between the Piper Tech and the Union Station. There are also corridors and possible advantages to go underground, even under all of LA River and such, and thereby not impact upon the LA River program that we have. So please consider alternatives, and that the Special Projects Office should be integrated with the floodplain people and the stormwater people because there seems to be a disconnect between those. Thank you.
Thank you. Arnold Sachs is our next speaker. After that is Michael Hunt.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sachs. Los Angeles River Special Projects Office and a revitalization master plan from a master city council. This is another opportunity for the city council to enact some legislation that will allow their cronies to start getting their hands on any kind of federal funds, any kind of state funds, any funds that might be used for any kind of establishment of a viable project for the Los Angeles River. Don't be fooled by this. Take a look at what's happened, how long it's taken for the waterfront to be developed. Take a look at what's happened at LAX for the redevelopment there, and the cost associated with it. Don't be fooled by this. This is a lot of smoke coming from the master producers that make up city, not the city government, but make up the controllers of the city government, the people that pull the strings, that dictate the policies, that the people at this horseshoe so verbally try to fulfill. It's all about money, changing hands, and slipping into deeper pockets. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Michael Hunt.
I'm going to have to take this issue very serious. If you guys get the money and actually it works for the city and it creates jobs, it's a good proposal. If you guys are going to get the money and squander it, it's not a good proposal. Hopefully that we can create some more jobs if you guys get federal funding for this project. Thank you.
Please prepare the roll on this item and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes. Thirteen ayes, I'm sorry.
Sorry. That's approved. Next item, please.
Next item's item number thirteen, excuse me, twenty-two, and that was called special for cards.
Okay, John Walsh on item number twenty-two.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Point of order: it is freezing in this chamber. The temperature is going down. You're wasting energy. My fingers are numb. Am I the only one who, it can't be more than 60 degrees, 59 degrees?
Sorry, sir. We'll check on that if you could get to the comments that are before us. We actually have turned up the thermostats as part of the policy here in City Hall, so we'll check that. We appreciate the tip.
Okay, you're taking up some of my time. I'd like to point out that the LA River is gang-ridden, and I am shocked at the quote just a few minutes ago where our new police commissioner says, "Gang membership doesn't automatically mean you're a bad person." Yes, it does. If you're a member of the Capone gang, you're a bad person, and if you're a member of any of these gangs, and I'm afraid of saying their names so they don't kill me. And I want to say the mainstream media will not cover what she said, but she has a lot of explaining to do. Thank you. HollywoodHighlands.org, read about True Deborah Yan.
Close our public comment on that item. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. If we call, sorry, if we can take up the item number thirty next, and we have a card, Arnold Sachs on item thirty, if you'd like to come forward, and I'd like to move the CLA report on that. And he'll be followed by John Walsh.
Good morning again, Arnold Sachs. I am outraged regarding this motion, that you would have the nerve to put in the word sensible. Sensible protections. Name some sensible motions that have come across out of the city council. Well, the living wage ordinance was a sensible motion. How about the creation of the advertising district at the convention center? That was a sensible motion. How about the, the bond passage for the airport revitalization? That was a sensible motion? No, wait, that wasn't, because we still don't know how many bonds have been allocated for the airport. They're trying to steal $950 million. And the convention center? No, wait, that wasn't a sensible motion either. That was passed, the city's going to get $2 million plus a percentage from a third party, but it was passed before the city, the public, found out it was for 40,000 square feet of advertising. And the living wage ordinance? Well, you get $1.25 raise, oh wait, but you lose your health benefits. That a sensible motion passed by the city council? How is it possible?
Madam President, he's not talking about item thirty.
Yes, thank you very much.
Excuse me, Mr. City Attorney, I would read to you relative to the city's position on HR 1247, which would extend sensible protections. I am talking regarding sensible protections that have been offered motion-wise by the city council. The wording is in the ordinance, I'm just discussing the use of the wording. Please have some sense, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you very much. Mr. Walsh, John Walsh is our next speaker.
Still cold in here. Folks out there, 50,000 people watching, your tax dollars to freeze us to death. This, you know, when something is good, don't start looking for little mistakes in it, you know? It's like looking for typographical errors in the Bill of Rights. This is an excellent, excellent motion. There's a, Mr. Ellison, who's up in Sacramento, wants to extend to 90 days the notice before eviction. 100% behind this. We should all be behind this because otherwise they'll take, get rid of us, you know, I'm so happy. My landlord was about to evict all of us for, and sell to build a high-rise, then the economy tanked, and that saved my rent-controlled apartment. That's the way things work now. And I'd like to just say that if you want to find out, if you're on the big eight for the next mayor, HollywoodHighlands.org, 17,000 projected hits this month, September, third month of full operation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I did move the CLA report on this. This was, is actually federal legislation, not Sacramento, but up in Congress, Keith Ellison, House Resolution 1247, he's from Minnesota, and it's been agendized for later this month. The Protecting Tenants Foreclosure Act would protect the tenancy rights of renters who are occupying housing units that are undergoing foreclosure. And colleagues, we passed the first in the country legislation that protected tenants whose buildings were foreclosed upon. So in other words, they've been paying the rent, they've been playing by the rules, they've been doing everything, and there were true innocents caught up in the foreclosure crisis simply because their building would change hands from one person to another, whether it was rent stabilized or not. Now there are protections that they get to stay in those units. It would seem to make sense for the banks and others who took those over to have people actually paying the rent because it's more valuable, more money stream, but some of the banks were just saying, "We don't know what to do," and they're kicking people out, which seemed to be the most inhumane thing to do. What this also allows us to do, then, is at a national level, to have 90 days' notes prior to eviction, but also provides the tenants with housing choice vouchers may remain in place for the entire term of their lease. So those federal vouchers, which are very important in keeping people in their homes, will be able to continue to be used. The National Coalition for the Homeless and others are very supportive of this because they know that for every person in this bad economic times who gets kicked out, not because they can't pay the rent, but enters a market where they may not have as a use of their vouchers, or the ability to find as affordable housing means another homeless person on the streets, which we all pick up the cost for. So I ask for your support. This is an important national move, and we, as we've communicated with folks at the federal level, they were inspired by what we did here in Los Angeles, which shows you when we exercise our power locally, that it can indeed change the country as well. So thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Garcetti, I'd just like to ask one question. Does this cover single-family as well as multifamily? Or the word property is inclusive of all?
So it is people that are renting homes, but I believe...
Renting homes or multifamily?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Parks, and, let's see, there are no cards on this item, so Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll and then tabulate the vote. Thirteen ayes. Next item.
Next item, Madam President, are the closed session items, would you like to take up, there are two of the items have cards on them, 25 and 26, would you like to take the public comment before going into closed?
All right. Why don't we take the cards on 25 first, and then we will go into closed session. On 25, Mr., I will call these cards in order, Mr. Michael Hunt, then we'll go to the Valley for Miriam Fogler, then back here for John Walsh. Michael Hunt, Miriam Fogler, and then John Walsh.
Good morning. I went into a meeting yesterday, very hopeful and very high frequency that we would have this thing behind us today, and yet, you know, I, I go in these meetings and we, we seek, we seek understanding for us not to be blind, for us to have understanding in what we really do, but I'm never treated as fair as everybody else. I, I just really don't get that. I, I do the same work as everybody else, and I, I get treated like a stepchild. But that's okay. I understand my purpose here. I understand, just like the mediator said, no matter what, the $500,000 will be there either this year or next year. There is, there is a great amount of hurt that I would go through, a great deal of steps to do what I do, win, and still be denied because of my color, my race, and my creed. And even with that, we have another 20 lawsuits that's coming that really is going to rock the city of LA in the same fashion, in the same way. All I ask is to be treated like everybody else. Please give me what's owed to me. Thank you. My name is Michael Hunt.
Thank you. We will go to Van Nuys for Miriam Fogler, and then Mr. Walsh, you have hit your time limit for today, so after Mr. Fogler, after Ms. Fogler speaks, it will be Arnold Sachs. Mr. Sachs, you can start coming up now, and then Matthew Dowd. Oh, Mr. Sachs, you've hit your time limit for today, too. So then Matthew Dowd will be after Miriam Fogler out in the San Fernando Valley. Go ahead, Ms. Fogler.
Yeah, I commend Michael Hunt heading the way here because it seems like that's the only thing you know about is being sued. And I have to look it up, and I got the number, the case number, so I guess I have to take my, my footsie down there unless I can get it from Michael Hunt another way. But we're on the way here, folks, is this, this contract... that was ratified here on Friday, that's going to have a very big echo effect, not only, and you know those living wage ordinance people, they should come on board and sue the city, too, for this is a joke, a dollar twenty-five and not giving them healthcare. I think it's an outrage. And what they're doing here with the coalition is an outrage. And what they're doing to workers is an outrage.
Madam President, she's nowhere near the topic.
Ms. Fogler?
Well, I'm talking about the fact that the matter is, that I commend Michael, Michael Hunt leading the way here, because we are getting, I'm getting sick and tired of my rights being violated, too, you know. And I had, and I'm ready to sue any time on this matter, and any other, any other matter that I need to do, as far as I'm concerned. Anything you can think, that you can clarify in offense, is very dangerous, because you like to take away our civil rights and labor rights. You like to enslave the public and the workers here at the city, taking away their overtime pay, to make them only do time, and then have furlough, and that's, that to me, fifty-nine hours, vacation time, half of it, that's a, what's, was a slap in their face when the mayor says, I want you to feel it in the pocketbook, well, this is a lawsuit, folks, and this, and the coalition should be suing them.
Ms. Fogler, you have to get back on topic, okay?
Michael Hunt, I appreciate what you're doing. I hope you the best of luck in getting what you get, because you deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker will be Matthew Dowd.
Well, thank you.
Hold on, Mr. Dowd, hold on.
And for, for the record, he has been banned from speaking, but he's been allowed to speak because this item relates to his lawsuit.
Please proceed, Mr. Dowd.
Thank you. Yes, and therefore, I'm going to take it that it's for everything. I don't, it's ridiculous. So we've got the attorneys here. Take them out the back, they'll tell you what happened yesterday, and I'll tell Channel Thirty-Five, they were trying to give us money, but it's ridiculous, the, the amount of settlement they think they, after what we've been through. Now, here's what I'm here to tell you. The Venice Beach vending issue is out of control, and the city is handing out these permits to people under the terms inextricably intertwined, and I explained this yesterday, because the, the Ninth Circuit Court mediator, she wanted a global settlement of all of these problems. But the judge already ruled, and I need Bill Rosendale to understand this, if someone can explain it to him, if he doesn't hear me. The judge ruled on two thousand four, and we got a jury for two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars in damages because of the words "inextricably intertwined," specifically, and there's no guidelines. Now, your attorneys over here have done the same thing again, and they've made a hundred inextricably intertwined spaces. They're handing out permits to people and denying permits under a vague standard that has a current ruling. Now, your attorneys made the ordinance in two thousand eight, and the judge ruled on us in January this year. Now, why haven't they fixed it? It's right there in black and white. Now, they understand what I'm talking about. I've already filed on it. I'm bringing Zuma Dog back in on, he's, he's suing on the two thousand eight ordinance, and he was, had a T-shirt that was banned in two thousand six, and on the rules of decorum. So we're all, it's, there's twelve of us on this one, and then the next one is going to be twenty, and I'll teach everybody how to do it.
Thank you very much. All right, that marks the end of our public comment. There are no speakers in the queue on this, and I believe we have to go into, Mr. Parks? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to see if there's several items that are on closed session that we can dispose of in open session. Item twenty-five is merely a companion piece that deals with attorney's fees on a case that we've already adjudicated the liability, and it is going to be escrowed in the court at this time. And so twenty-five, we could move that. Lima, we've already handled number twenty-six, and the council's already approved that recently. Ask for twenty-eight, that there's a continuance on twenty-eight, and then twenty-nine is on the, another agenda, so we get to that one, we have a, we could also dispose of that in open session.
Madam Clerk, we, can we vote on those individually or collectively?
Yes, Madam President, yeah. Council would vote on those individually, and the first item is item number twenty-five, and that's authorizing the city attorney to deposit a total of two hundred eleven thousand dollars.
You want to open, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Han.
Yes, so I'm, I'm not clear on what you're asking us to do on twenty-five.
On twenty-five, we've already settled, have a companion case that we, by putting forth two hundred and some odd thousand dollars, have embargoed that in the court, rather than pay the plaintiff. Once our appeal is over, then, if we win the appeal, then the court will return our money. If we lose the appeal, the money's already...
So we're just putting this money into escrow?
An escrow account at the court. This is for attorney's fees, number twenty-five. We've already done the same thing on...
And that's, our city attorneys are in agreement with that?
Yes, right. That we're following their recommendation.
That's correct.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, I have one question on item twenty-nine. There is... Let's just do it one at a time, then. All right, fine. That's twenty-five and the companion, twenty-six together?
No, just twenty-five.
All right, then open the roll on twenty-five. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item.
And then twenty-six, council has already acted on, and this is just a receive and file of the city attorney report. And I believe there's a card on this item, on twenty-six.
I do not have a card on twenty-six. All right.
So, so, and this is just a receive and file. Council can either vote on it, or it can be a unanimous vote if council wishes.
All right, open the roll, and then close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item.
Next item is item twenty-eight, and there's just a request to continue that matter to October seventh.
All right, open the roll on that. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, next item.
And then in the special meeting, and would you wish to recess the closed, excuse me, the regular meeting?
Right, we will recess the regular meeting, go into the special meetam, meeting on this item.
Alakon, Cardenas, Han, Wizar, Corretz, Lavange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendale, Smith, Zine, Garcetti, thirteen members present, and this is a one-item meeting. It's a closed session item, and I believe this can be handled in open session.
All right, and we do have one speaker card on that, and Mr. Walsh, you have spilled, filled up. This is a special meeting, so Mr. Walsh, you have a card, and you have time on this meeting.
For you folks out there, I only spoke for four minutes at the last meeting. We have somebody new at the city clerk, doesn't understand the rules. When I take one minute instead of two minutes, that's just one minute. I only spoke four minutes. I think that you should give Joanne Marie Anthony and George McNeil every dime. This raises claims of harassment and retaliation by the LAPD. Maybe Deborah Yang, who loves gang members, don't think they're necessarily bad people, maybe she can check this out. HollywoodHighlands.org, you'll find out what's really happening in this city. H.I.G.H.L.A.N.D.S. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Walsh, Mr. Parks.
We'd ask that we approve that on open session. This case deals with an already settled case in which we appealed the expert fees on the prior case. We lost that appeal, and this is a payment, and we moved it quickly so that we could stop paying the interest payments.
Thank you very much. No further speakers on the queue on this item. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll?
And Madam President, I'm sorry, just for the record, that amount is fifty-six thousand, four hundred ninety-two dollars and ninety-one cents plus interest.
All right. Open the roll on that item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you very much. Next item.
And that would conclude the special meeting. Do you wish to adjourn and go back to the regular?
Let's recess the, go back to the regular meeting. Thank you.
And then that would take council back to the other closed session item. It's item number twenty-seven. And then, do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session on that item?
Yes, let's clear the desk before we do that.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motions are posted and referred.
And that would clear the desk for closed.
All right, if we can have an admonition from our city attorney?
Council's going into closed session on item twenty-seven pursuant to Government Code, Section five four nine five six point nine A.
So if we can have our officers assist us in clearing the chamber of those who are not here for closed session, so that we can begin.
We're back in open session. Madam Clerk, do we need to take any votes in open session?
No, Mr. President, those are all enclosed and that would clear the desk.
Next, next order of business?
That was it.
Okay. No excuses on the desk or anything? Okay. Any announcements, colleagues? If not, do we have any adjourning motions today? Yes, we do. If I can ask everybody to rise for our adjourning motions, please. If we could have everybody rise, please. And Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you very much, Council President. It's with great sadness that we adjourn in the memory of Gary DeSano. He passed away Sunday, September 20th, 2009. Gary DeSano was chosen as the 2009-2010 president of the Pasadena Tournament of Roses Association. Mr. DeSano was known as an enthusiastic and fun-loving individual. He was passionate about the parade and game and never let any setbacks inhibit his dedication to the organization. He will be greatly missed. It's very sad that Mr., the only way that you can be the president of the Tournament of Roses Association is that you have to put in decades upon decades of service. And you basically end up by default on the first of the year, every year, for all those many decades, on the spot, working in some capacity with and for the parade. And it's very sad that everybody who knows Mr. DeSano were looking forward to witnessing the wonderful work that he's done for the Tournament of Roses and the culmination of him being able to be there and to be the president. And he fell short, his life fell short just a few months, and it's very, very sad to see that happen. But he lived life to the fullest. He was loved and respected by many, many people. And everybody's been talking about how sick he's been over the last few years and how everybody was praying that he would make it through January to be able to see that day and take on those responsibilities that he's earned. So with that, we adjourn in his memory. And also, he's survived by his three children, Christina, Stephanie, and Dominique DeSano.
And Mr. Labange actually did the motion yesterday, so we'll make sure that you are attached to that as well. Mr. Cardenas, thank you for that.
I'm sorry, this was given to me by my brother. A lot of people know my brother as an engineer and a former commissioner, but he's also on the Tournament of Roses Committee along with Mr. DeSano. So that's why I gave it to him.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you. Ms. Hahn?
I'd like us to adjourn in the memory of Billy Eileen Curry, who passed away on September 12th at the age of 76. Her husband, Bob Curry, I have known for a long time because he owns a very successful container storage business in Wilmington, Calcarriage. The youngest of five children, Billy was born in Knoxville, Iowa, and moved to California when she was 18. And certainly thereafter, she met and married Bob. They've lived happily ever after for 55 years. Most of the time, they were in La Habra and Fullerton. She's survived by her husband, Bob, their five children, Bob, Neil, Triola, Marcia, and Michaela, along with eight grandchildren. And I know that she will be dearly, dearly missed. And our sympathies go out to Bob and their children.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much, members. From time to time, we learn of someone who passed and we didn't realize it, how special they were. Dr. Dan Eisenstein, a very special man who was key in our efforts to revitalize the subway movement in Los Angeles. He was a consultant, a well-known professional in international tunneling industry. He lived in Canada, was at the University of British Columbia in Vancouver, our sister city. He was key in the argument to get the subway going back Wilshire again, which convinced Congress that it's okay and safe. He was key in the tunnels for the new goal line to Boyle Heights and making sure they were safe and engineered properly. He was a wonderful man, and he helped me when I was on the MTA as we began that discussion. He's survived by his wonderful wife, Diana, and their two daughters, son-in-laws, and five grandchildren. I ask we adjourn in memory of Dr. Dan Eisenstein, a great human being.
Thank you. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Robert Cersei. He was a member of the Tuskegee Airmen WWII Service Group. Also, he just recently died of colon cancer September the 7th in Atlanta while visiting his granddaughter. He was born in Mount Pleasant, Texas in 1921, briefly attended what is now Prairie View A&amp;M University before enlisting in the Army Air Corps in 1942. He served as a general clerk in Italy. And in fact, on his way to the war, he was, survived a submarine attack and several air assaults on their encampment in Italy. They also, he was honorably discharged in 1945 with commendations for supporting combat missions in Europe, North Africa, and Middle East. He settled in Los Angeles and attended, for a brief time, UCLA Extension School. He worked in, as a post office employee in downtown. He also was in private business with several clothing stores in both the Hollywood and South LA area. What's interesting also, he was a longtime Republican, but also had a change of heart and supported Barack Obama during his most recent presidential campaign. And ultimately, he was invited to the inauguration, which was one of the high points of his life. He survived by his daughter, Robin, four grandchildren, and his services are now pending.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much. Mr. President, I would like to adjourn in memory of John Thomas Mace, born June 25th, 1940. John, born and raised in Indiana, was a fan of music, and he relished jazz and bluegrass and enjoyed playing the guitar. He was a writer, a poet, and a sketch artist, and believed in the constancy of improving oneself. He cherished his friends and relationships, often saying, "The best part of a journey is meeting the people along the way." John leaves behind his wife, Katie, eight children, and 23 grandchildren. May he rest in peace. My second adjourning motion is in memory of Leon Harold Kaplan, born June 25th, 19, this is, okay, he was born in 1925, I'm sorry, in Washington. He grew up in Seattle's Madrona neighborhood. He met his wife, Gladie, in high school and married in 1947 after he returned home from World War II. They had the good fortune to recently celebrate 62 years together in marriage. His father, Jacob, founded Kaplan Paper Company in 1912 where Leon cut his earliest business teeth, learning the trade. He became an icon and was often honored within the national paper and printing communities. And he finished his career over 40 years later as a president and CEO. He leaves behind his wife, Gladie, and children, Marty, Nancy, and Steve. They were beside him in his last hours as he rested in comfort. Leon joins his parents and siblings, Philip, Ethel, and Henry, after a wonderful life filled with family love, business success, community service, lots of fun, obedient dogs, jazz, politics, fast cars, and yachting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Any other adjourning motions? Mr. Zion?
Thank you, Mr. President. Edward William Miller III passed away September 18th. You may have seen this on the news, the youngster who perished in a fire at his residence with his dogs, known as Little Eddie. Born January 7th, 1993 at Northridge Hospital, Little Eddie was 16 and 1/2 years old. Attended Reseda High, very active and a loving boy. Loved fishing, skateboarding, bicycling, and water polo. Also was in the West Valley Little League and very involved with the fundraising activities at Reseda High School. Also a member of the ROTC. Anytime he was needed by his family, he was there for them. According to his mother, Debbie, her son was loved by everybody and tried to help out the family with the chores such as cleaning, helping his aunt Betty around her house as well. Little Ed was known around the neighborhood as Yard Sale Boy since he had yard sales almost every weekend to make ends meet. He loved animals and had three dogs, Peedy, Lucky, and Cuckoo, who perished in the fire with him. According to his aunt, they all died peacefully from smoke inhalation inside the bedroom, huddled together. Little Ed became a man of the house when his father died a couple of years ago when he was 14 and 1/2 years of age. Little Ed even tried to get a job at that young age to help his mother. His big brother, Steven, 34 years of age, is serving in South Korea, coming home to help with the funeral arrangements. Little Ed is looking, was looking forward to turning 18 and joining the military like his big brother and Uncle Burke before him. His aunt told his story about something that happened just a couple of weeks ago. Little Ed was visiting his aunt and home alone with his grandmother, Doris. His grandmother was having a heart attack. Little Ed called 911 to save his grandmother's life. He also put down that he was a donor on his driver's license so his organs would go to others in order to maybe save another person's life. He would be deeply missed by his family and friends. Survived by his mom, Debbie Miller, brother, Steven, grandma, Doris, and aunt Betty. May he rest in peace. Edward William Miller III, known as Little Ed.
Thank you. We'll put all members on that. Thank you. If there's no other adjourning motions, Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll. We'll be next in session this Friday, that is, the 25th of September. Until then, have a good rest of the week, and this meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned.